Hi, everyone, and thanks for joining us for the Mid-Atlantic Backhand Club Study Session. For April second, two thousand twenty-five. If you're joining us by watching our YouTube recording, send us an email to midatlanticbg@gmail.com to find out more about our study session and our weekly tournaments. So, how was everyone? Ready to go?
Yes.
Yeah.
Guess so.
Okay, so get your slide all set up to vote.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So I think we're probably quite a long way from thinking about a cube, so let's, let's roll the dice and see how we do. Please, okay. All right, double ones. Can it give us some interesting choices for sure?
Well, two, one, two seems obvious.
Yeah.
Put those checkers to good use.
Bring the one around uh from the fourteen to to the twelve, excuse.
Uh, I, I think we should slide the five. Because we wanna pick up the last checker, so we wanna be hit.
Stop the five.
Sorry, no, no, from fourth. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry.
This is the original position.
Forget. Too much, too. Yeah, 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 I know. I felt from four to five, it's a new, it's a new rule.
Okay, you can move backwards, okay.
The Donald backwards rule, yes, yes, yes. I, I gotta, I gotta stop drinking early in the day.
Or start earlier, one or the other.
I'll start earlier, yeah, so I don't see.
Don't get high on your own supply, okay, anyway.
Okay, so one suggestion was fourteen to twelve, two, one, twice. Here's that play.
Well, I like it because we have more numbers to hit um. Five if he gets in the outfield, so I would probably play that, yeah.
Okay. What, anything else that we might consider?
Might consider fourteen, thirteen, twenty, nineteen, six.
I guess the question is whether to slot the one.
Right, I do think that's worth talking about. Are we sure that we really wanna make that? Yep.
Uh. Hmm.
Hmm. Well, first of all, you don't wanna come up from the nineteen because double fives would get you hit there. And then you'd be able to get on the bar and hit or re-hit, so that's kind of your safety.
Okay, that's a really good point. You leave it on the twenty point, they roll double fives. They're gonna come all the way around the corner. And stop on the twenty point, and now you're gonna have a double shot at them.
I kinda like the suggestion of slotting the one, in which case four to three as well.
Okay, so let's look at some plays involving that, right? So four to three, just because you might as well smooth out your, your distribution.
And then maybe fourteen, twelve, again leaving the one in the back.
Okay, so let's put that in there, fourteen to twelve, four, three, two, one. So here, let's take a look at what that would look like.
That's interesting, cuz we do need to pick up a second checker to win, that's true, so yeah.
Not only that, but I would also suggest that, you know, getting hit does something else, it recirculates these otherwise sort of semi-useless checkers. Yeah.
But, but it does, however, increase our chance of being gammoned. And or backgammoned, backgammoned.
Or backgammon.
Yeah.
All of which is bad.
Yeah. Hmm. I would say because we have a, a higher score, we should be not trying to get gammoned, so maybe that's disincentivizes us from trying this risky play.
Getting gammoned at this score is bad, getting backgammon is especially bad.
But why would this, why would being hit increase our chances of a backgammon? I don't see why. We would definitely come in if we are hit. So we either hit the other checker or we don't.
Well, it's because, because there are plenty of scenarios where they roll, where they roll doubles and bring checkers all the way around very quickly.
Oh, oh, if you roll double fives, yeah, if you roll double five, yeah, you're right.
No, but I mean, uh, if we slot on the one and then they come in and then they roll double sixes after, it's gonna be catastrophic. I mean, the chance is low, but, but yeah. But should, should we be worrying about that? Like, is the chance high enough that you should be worrying about it?
Okay, maybe, but here's another question. Are we so sure that we're out to just try to win this game, or are we just trying to save the gammon?
Probably say just save the gammon, yeah, uh-huh.
I, I know, I think we could win. I think we could win with two of his men. I won once with one of the opponent's men only remaining. So I think with two, it's a winnable game. Not likely, but possible.
Okay, I've got, I've got three candidate plays up there, so if you want to vote. Unless there's something else that you're thinking about.
If you are thinking just save the gammon, is that an argument for making the one point?
Probably, yeah.
What do you think, Jason? Is this a winnable game?
Well, sure. It's winnable.
Yeah.
It's definitely loseable if I'm white, therefore it must be winnable for red.
Okay, I think it was Tom that pointed out that you, you definitely do wanna stay on the, the twenty point. You, you don't wanna move off that, that. Because of the double fives.
Here's what I might wanna do, um. So you don't, you wanna leave that one on the twenty. I don't wanna bring the fourteen down to the twelve, cuz that actually leaves less shots if he comes out. So I would probably go fourteen to thirteen and uh eleven to ten, because then that makes double fives. You would get double hit, that would be interesting, but uh it's, it's less likely to get hit than six, five, so. Um. And then what do you have? One more to go.
Well, then the double fives and you're fifty-fifty to either hit him or be backgammoned.
And that's true. So maybe that's a little dangerous. But I still think coming down to the twelve, if they pop out in the outfield, that's gonna give you less shots than going to the thirteen.
Hmm.
That, that's true, but you're giving back some of what you gained by moving the checker from the eleven up. It basically each time you move up, either of them won, you're giving up the same amount, I, rough, I think, without doing all the counting, it's generally about the case.
Yeah, maybe so.
So you could maybe argue for four, three, four, three, just shift the stack a little to not move either of them.
Hmm, yeah, good point.
No, I, I think, I think we should stay diversified, four, three, only ones and two, one.
All right, if there's no more candidate plays to throw in, we could vote now. You haven't already, there's quite a few votes that have come in already. But let's bring the ship into land.
The complex play, lots of factors involved.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot going on here. Um.
Well.
This is, this is a good way to, to make a blunder, because there's a lot at stake here.
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like slightly more votes for the this is a fun play, I believe. This is the one that's getting the most votes right now, five votes out of nine. Yeah. Ooh, the other one's starting to catch up.
Uh, wait, uh, I think I voted wrong. I wanted uh two, one, two votes, so let me edit it. There.
You can edit, edit your response.
Yeah, I just did, okay.
Okay, I think we're, this is the play we're gonna make. Okay, they dance. Now, let's see what XG says. Now, we're all geniuses.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yep.
Very interesting.
Uh, Karen, Karen was actually genius, I just wanna point that out.
The top, everything showing.
I, I got, I got half of it, right?
Yeah, everything showing slots the one, nothing makes the one.
Everything, you're right. How far down do we have to go? Before making the one point, okay, keep scrolling. Keep scrolling.
Wait for it, wait for it.
Yeah, wait for it, here it is. It's a whopper.
Hmm.
Really is, yeah.
Cuz you stand so much to gain when you get hit and recirculate that checker. Well, I don't know what's gonna happen now.
The question is, do you leave that check, you leave that checker there?
The um difference on the moving, instead of fourteen to twelve, fourteen, thirteen, eleven, ten, okay, twenty-six null points.
Yeah, not.
Let, let's see the opponent's backgammon chances. So with our move, they have six percent, almost six percent backgammons, right? And with the uh double one move is how much? Three percent, yeah.
But you don't, you don't rate to get another checker sent back.
But we have twenty-one percent wins under that move and over thirty percent with this move, that's the difference.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Pretty interesting.
And the opponent also gammons more, doesn't him, like uh twenty-two point four and then yeah, fifteen, that's quite a lot more gammons for the opponent as well. Uh-huh.
Okay, what a fun position.
Yeah.
These are, oh, I hate to get these over the board, cuz I just feel like I, I'm containment is so difficult.
Yeah.
Okay, double ones, now what are we gonna do? We got another problem.
Yeah.
Definitely cover the one point.
So did we learn that maybe we're not supposed to cover the one point?
Yes.
Probably not.
I would just move, I, I would move randomly the twelve, the, 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 the man on the twelve and eleven. However.
Okay, where do you want him to go, Donald? Let's, let's.
Twelve, 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 ten, and eleven. Twelve, ten, eleven. No, okay, sorry, one, two, yeah, twelve, ten, eleven, nine.
Okay, that's reasonable. So.
What about, what, what if?
I'm sorry, Jason, why is it that we shouldn't cover the one point here?
Well, it, it seems like from the analysis on the last play, I think the reason is we're trying to recirculate a checker and hit the other one.
Okay, okay.
How about twenty sixteen and just bring more into the containment in the outfield?
That, that's what I was thinking, Jason. Just with twenty sixteen, we have the same situation we had the last time without the double five joker thing.
And I will take care of the backgammon risk. And yeah, if he rolls double fives, we are screwed and.
Not, not if we make the ten point, then we aren't, we block their double five.
Right, but that, but that lets him jump over us with a five, six. And any other five, we have fewer shots to hit him back. I thought, that, I thought of that and rejected it because it makes it too constraining, I think.
Yeah.
Getting hit is not so bad, right? I, I mean, isn't that we, the whole point behind slotting the ace point is in some cases we want to get hit, and if, even if we don't wanna get hit, the penalty of getting hit really is not so bad here.
Yeah, I've got a new one.
Okay.
Twenty seventeen, eleven, ten.
Uh, yes. That, that way you can recirculate that checker on double five.
Exactly.
And you don't have to keep the person on the twenty as your backup, so you get a double shot.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
I like that.
The other move is just a slight variation on that, um. Which is twelve, ten and twenty eighteen.
Can't humble.
Why, why is this better, Karen?
Well, um. We may wanna make the five, so this is our maximum builders to make the five. Hmm. Kinda hard to contain him if we don't make the five.
Kinda like it, I like that.
Okay, you're right.
It gives us a joker of a six, five next time.
Yeah. Which we don't.
Like, I like Karen's play, I'll do that, yeah.
I spent three hours yesterday playing Karen. Two seventeen-point matches and we each won one match. I was, I was very tired after that. Okay, you wanna vote?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna quit thinking about these positions and just call Karen.
Yeah. This was my problem when I was playing Karen. She was the one person who was not gonna give me any advice.
Karen, we had phone a friend to this, um game.
So it looks like all the votes or many of them are coming in for Karen's play. Twelve to ten, twenty to eighteen. Okay, all right, let's do it, see what happens. Oops, sorry, sorry. Okay, we did get hit back, all right, let's take a look. All right, so Karen is now the designated phone a friend.
But the idea of sliding the ten and moving from the back was clearly right.
Okay, so we got hit, which not the worst thing, right? We get to hit back with all fours. Any combination numbers? No, not really, so double twos and three ones, of course, so fourteen shots will hit.
Snake eyes.
Uh, and yeah, right, so fifteen, fifteen returns. Um, I don't think that's one.
I, I really disagree with that vote.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, bar twenty-three, ten, seven.
Twenty-three and seven. Yeah. And so, you're, you're doing like the maximum hangback kind of play, right?
Yeah.
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 Well, it keeps the eighteen out of direct range with better chan, with chance of a return. Um. It leaves the twenty-three behind, the twenty-one moving up to the twenty doesn't really help.
Okay, any, any other plays that we might wanna consider? Here's the original, sorry.
We could make the one at this point, now that we have that extra checker back, do part twenty-three, four, one, but I'm not sure that I like it.
Uh, I, I think that maybe now we should make the one, now that our checker is uh behind the white checker already. So and then uh we're gonna have a better chance of picking up the second checker now afterwards, after we hit one. Um. So yeah, that, that play was the first one that stood out to me. Right? We don't really need to recirculate the checker now that we already have.
That is true. Yeah, the recirculation may, may be harmful to us now by increasing our opponent's gammon chances.
Yes.
My, those seem like the two.
No, I, I disagree, I, I disagree, I think we should leave the one open and hope to be hit and recirculate because.
Yeah, I think recirculating still has more to offer than upside.
Absolutely, yeah.
The, the. All right, since we've determined our two best plays, perhaps, let's. Close.
No.
Four to one, slightly ahead.
I demand a recount.
Oh, everything's rigged.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, ten to seven, surges ahead. That's how you know.
Seven.
Okay, that one's slightly ahead, we've got nine votes, that's probably. So, let's.
That's correct.
I had forgot to vote.
You forgot to vote, oh.
No, I just did, that's why the.
Oh, you're the one. Okay, ten, seven it is, here we go. It was close.
Hmm. Hmm. I'm surprised.
Do, do I get uh smug equity now?
A little bit, yeah.
But you see, now na- now that he, as we have seen, we'll see, his next move would be to move to the one point, now it's even more important to have the twenty.
Okay, but Donald, you're, you're playing results, let's not do that.
Okay.
Okay, let's hit something. Oh, brother. Oh, is this the worst?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're not very good at this.
Yeah, no.
Um, twenty-three, nineteen. No, we don't need to, actually, we can just move inside the handboard, it's fine. Uh. Do we save the gammon or not? Now. Like, do we give up and just save the gammon or no? Uh.
Well, are we?
Is that an option on the table?
Yeah, well, the gammons are very much uh in play. Are you talking about saving the backgammon? We, we could save the backgammon right now.
The thing is.
Here you go, here's the, here's the backgammon saving play, right?
And that also blocks some rolls.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, I meant back, I meant saving the backgammon, my, my mistake, sorry, yeah. Uh.
Okay, and, and then I don't know, what, eighteen to nine, it could be a play?
I kinda like the twenty-three, eighteen, not because it saves the backgammon so much as because it's our one chance to try to contain.
Okay, so how many, all right, so let's, let's count things up. After this play, how many rolls are we still gonna have another shot at? At them?
Uh, two, one, two. Two, two, maybe, no, yeah, two, two, yes. Uh, two, three, and that's basically it, I think.
The, um.
Oh, five, one, two, one.
Four, two as well for two, yeah.
So nine with the, nine rolls to the one.
Double sixes.
Two, two, three, two, four, that's another five rolls, three, three, and six, six. So that's sixteen rolls.
Okay, that's a lot. Okay, now, let's go, let's look at this play.
Sixteen.
I think I got six, nine rolls with the one, five more with the two. Double threes and double sixes.
Uh, well, one, six doesn't uh.
I didn't count that one, I counted the other nine.
Okay, okay, all right. I see.
So what, what, we got sixteen?
You, you agree with the count now?
Let me see.
Uh, well, I have to do it in my head by, by, by scratch, so I would.
Five, one.
You know, if we do this, all numbers bigger than uh seven or bigger get by us. And we've got four crossovers to get off the gammon and he's got two to get off. So while we're on roll, we would have to roll perfectly to get four crossovers.
By saying this, we're pretty much doomed to lose a gammon if we make this play.
Can we see fifth one, because we'd have to bear off, so there's almost no chance.
Okay, let's look at the other play. Now, let's do this. How, how many shots do we get here? Or how many rolls do they have that still leave a shot?
Most.
Oh. I don't think this is the play, we need to keep maximum contact, we should um, this, this seems too craven to me. Uh, yeah.
Six, five, six, four, six, three, six, two, and six, one. That's ten already. Um. Five, four, five, three. Five, two, and five, one.
If we keep the sorry, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
Four, one, up to twenty. Three, four, two, up to twenty-four. Three, two, twenty-six, uh, and then some doubles like uh double twos. Uh, that's it.
Double ones.
Not double ones, we will not get a direct shot, we'll get an indirect.
If we keep the eighteen, we get shots if they surpass the eighteen point, or if they uh do not get, surpass the eighteen points. So, and we even get indirects if they do not surpass the eighteen points, extra indirects. So I think for a contact, we shouldn't do, make the eighteen, I think. So. Yeah.
Would it be, would it be reasonable to consider seven, two, six, two?
How about twenty-three, nineteen, seven, two?
Hmm. Yeah, then we get double direct shots on those eight, sixteen shot uh numbers that don't.
Well, no, it doesn't block some of the ones that the others did, like doubles, threes, twos, threes, and sixes that were blocked before, now hit and just.
Oh, that's, yeah, complicated. Yeah.
You're not including.
Yeah, I, I don't like this.
Uh, uh, in the, uh, Jason, you're not having seven, two, six, two? Or do you have it on your list? No, you don't.
I'll add it, I, I don't think that's a.
Seven, three, six, one for me.
Again, I don't wanna close the one, but.
Uh.
Sorry, uh, sorry, my, my, my mistake, uh, so it would be six, one, seven, three, right? Six, four, seven, three, yeah.
I think it's, I think we, as soon as we break that, then we've conceded the gamon in any way.
Yeah, I, I think it's hard to put the game back together.
I don't know.
Okay. I think I got my play, let's vote.
If we get hit on the eighteen, we get extra shot on the twenty-four, so I don't I don't see any reason to to cover the.
They did, these plays are so difficult.
Yeah. There's, there's good arguments for every play, it's, it's pretty hard, yeah.
Yeah, these, these are so hard. Well, uh. Making the eighteen point did not get any love, nobody wanted to play twenty-three, eighteen, seven, three. I voted for eighteen to nine, but I don't have very much confidence in this. I, I get these wrong a lot. I just see a lot more shots out of this. Um, and then this is also you know, making a builder for maybe, once we hit the shot, then we're gonna want some builders to make the five point. I, I don't know.
You, you think there's more shot this way, I think there's less.
No, there's, there's definitely more. I, I counted them, there's like twenty-six rolls that they have to shot.
But most of them would be indirect, no?
No, most are direct, because they're gonna have to move from the twelve into range.
The only one that's indirect is, is double ones.
One, two.
Um, oh yeah, one, two, and I'm not even, I'm not even really counted those. There's twenty-six numbers, if I counted them right, that will leave a direct shot. Um. And doubles, I'm not, sorry, six, five? Think about six, five, they have to hit. And then we get a double direct shot. With the downside being that if we don't get out of there or hit and.
Well, we'd have to do one or the other, if they're on the one and the two, we can't not hit and not escape.
Uh, good point.
Even you couldn't roll that.
I, try me. Okay, all right, so the votes are in for eighteen to nine. Right now, that's the one I picked, I'm not going to request smug equity when I'm right, because I have so little confidence in. It was right.
Hmm. Is it because of the gammons reduction or something like that?
It's just you, you, um, yeah, well, one way you reduce gammons is by hitting a. See, seven, three, six, one, double whopper, I guess, I think Rick pointed out, like, you just can't ruin your board, you, you still have a chance to win this game. And you know, holding the board together is also good for gammon saving.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I, I, I'll, I'll just see the, um the recording later, so I study this, cuz I really don't understand why we should move the eighteen, but, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Just study it later.
All right, are you, are you gonna study this horrible roll I'm about to throw?
By, by the way, the twenty-three, nineteen, one got did bet, is on the list there, I didn't see the twenty-three, eighteen anywhere.
Cuz you gotta scroll down.
Yeah, there it is.
Double whopper.
So going twenty-three, nineteen and not blocking it, but just hoping for a low roll and having two different numbers was bad, I mean, it's still bad, but, yeah.
Okay. You wanna see bad rolls? Here you go, bam. Oh.
You're a genius.
Uh, let's, let's not go that far.
Oh, okay, this is an interesting two.
This is very interesting. Because, yeah, I don't know, can I make an argument for slotting the five point?
Yes, absolutely.
I, I'm willing to make the argument for that.
Absolutely.
I'm not willing to say it's right, but I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We better consider it, right?
Yes.
Okay, are there, are there any other plays we ought to consider? There's, you know, you could keep going. Uh.
Well, nine, seven blocks, five, twos, and one, sixes. So. So.
It opens up five-three and five-four that are currently protected again.
That's true.
Yeah.
Are we still not considering block uh slot, excuse me, not slotting, but covering the one for recirculation purposes?
Uh I think so, yeah. You know, I I think there's a, there's so much value in trying to pick up that second checker.
Yeah.
I I think it's, I feel like it's actually remarkable that we've gone through this whole session and as a group, we have not made a mistake yet. That that's really hard to do with these types of positions. I just jinxed us.
Because we are a smart group.
Okay, let's vote.
There's also the hive mind effect, that's why we even. Like how uh. Like if you ask people to to uh guess the amount of beans in a jar. Yeah, everybody will have wild guesses, but the average of the guesses will be very close to the to the right answer. It's remarkable, yeah.
Tom would say this is the fun play.
Yeah.
Tom likes fun plays. Okay, the votes are all pretty much coming in for slotting the five, we wanna have fun here, so let's slot the five. Now, we're probably gonna wanna make the five point if we have an.
Oh, yeah. In fact.
Different than making the one point.
Yeah. But I I would accept making both if you if you fans, you get a four, one, two or three.
Okay. Alright, so this is the play. Let's look.
Oh, Don, we actually.
Wow. Making the one point is a double whopper, almost a.
Yeah.
That the value of recirculating that checker is just enormous. If they didn't have a block, you'd want, you'd probably wanna cover it.
Correct.
Look at this, this, so this is the uh the rare rule in backgammon where if you can play one dice. Only. He, one or the other, you have to play the larger numbers, this play is forced, you're not allowed to. Okay, let's follow one, let's hit this checker. Go.
Yeah, you're a gen-.
Now we can, now we can cover, I would say.
Because there's nothing else to recirculate, right?
Yeah, correct, correct, now we wanna cover.
Okay, what other options could we consider? If we're not going to cover, what would we do?
That nineteen to seventeen.
Yeah, that would be it.
Yeah. I guess I'll throw in twenty-four, twenty-two, I don't know. Actually, kinda looking pretty good here, we got a decent chance to win this.
Yeah.
That's still optimistic.
Yes. Alright. Votes are in. Play. Read a one, okay, everybody likes that, let's do it. This one's a lot closer, that's interesting. And we still got it, right? Alright, they snuck out, we gotta do something now. I'll take a four for sure. Back. Oh, this this awards us many options.
I think hitting the eleven. Doesn't give a direct back.
Yeah, but we don't want him to. To make the five points, but yeah, he wouldn't be able to, cause he would have to move, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so let's.
Okay, let's look at some other options, like, what if we wanted to hit on the five point? Then what are we gonna do?
And we would do nineteen fifteen to like, to get closer to the eleven checker, or maybe seventeen.
Nineteen seventeen, twenty-four, twenty-two.
Yeah, that's it, that's it, yeah.
Twenty-four, twenty-two, nineteen, seventeen, nine to five. Those seem to be our choices.
I still think it's better to. To to hit the eleven. Right, yeah.
Let's let's look at, let's look at hitting on the eleven.
When he misses, we have an opportunity to point on a five.
Yeah. Five, fours and sixes will hit.
And and if he comes in, then if he comes in with a five and not a four, a five-two, five-three. Then he it we can really pounce, five, five-one, he doesn't break it, five-four, five-six, he hits, five-five disaster, but nothing we can do about that. Yeah, I I I think I like them.
Alright, looks like the votes are for hitting on the eleven point. Okay, that's what I voted for too. Wow, not close.
We were actually a favorite at that point. No, no, we weren't a favorite, but we had positive equity.
Yeah, so Rick, you're gonna, you're gonna ask me what the heck is going on there, right?
Yeah, well, that one makes no sense whatsoever, we're under fifty percent with no gammon chances and we positive equity, that that is just flat wrong, I'm willing to say that without understanding it.
Okay, I have the answer for you.
Go for it.
Cube ownership.
Yeah, true.
We don't have to win the game, we just have to get close enough to be able.
And I I was, my thought was it's very unlikely that scenario could arise, but it's also a very small.
It's a non-zero chance, right? I mean, we just have to sneak up to their take point. And and then the cube confers some value to you, so the the cube has value in this position, it's a lot less than it usually is. But it's not, it's, there's some value to the cube.
I I think if we. Jason, we had point, let's say we had pointed on the five.
Yeah.
With one in the bar, I mean, I think we could have cubed them out. I'm not sure.
No, no, because we're, look, we're only, we. We would barely be better than fifty, well, we're fifty-fifty now, but I don't think he would drop in that situation at this match score.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't consider the match score, so.
Okay, so they they hit us, but we got some returns here. Bad, I'll take it.
Okay, I know two of them.
Yes, one, two. Now what?
Same idea, let's get to the seven, so we've got a cover for the five when he missed, when he fans.
Do we wanna be in range to cover the five or in range to hit the nine? We can't do both.
Hit the nine.
I wanna be able to hit the checker on the nine.
Of course, if we can pick, if we can cover the five, that gives us time to worry about getting the nine, but.
See. Okay, so here's one way of doing it, you could do nineteen. Uh thirteen, twenty-four, eighteen. And then the other way of doing it is. Twenty-four, twelve.
That one is. The best indirect possible at the five and a direct at the nine, so I kinda like that.
So the question is whether we want a checker on the thirteen or the twelve. And both sevens and sixes. I mean, sevens and eights. Have. Six numbers.
Right.
So whether the checkers on the thirteen or the twelve. They're equally likely to cover the five if he doesn't come in.
Okay, how about hitting?
And and the other point I was gonna make is. Is double fours. Pick up and make.
I'm gonna do double twos.
And the double twos pick up and make, and four-three, if we come to the twelve.
So it's the same either way, it's eight shots to make and two shots that both hit and make.
So that's assuming he doesn't come in, if he does come in.
Direct shots here on the nine, we have all fours, that's eleven. We have uh nine from the eighteen, so that's six-three, two more. And five-four, two more, so we have fifteen so far, we have double.
But don't don't, don't double count the five-four, because you already have fours.
Oh, yeah, true, okay, so thirteen so far.
But you also three-one, one-one.
Uh, yeah. So that's sixteen. Fifteen, seventeen, so, yeah, seventeen or eighteen or something.
Okay, now let's do this, go it the other way. I don't think there's gonna be as many, right?
You know, if he if he does come in.
Further back.
I suppose being on the nineteen is better than being on the eighteen, um. You know, in terms of hitting things that are coming around.
It might also be slightly worse for getting backgammon.
Right.
I I think we have to give ourselves the more the more shots to hit rather than that extra pit back, so I think the thirteen is the better way to go.
That would be this play.
Right, that that's gonna be much better chances of hitting on the nine, and we've established it's the exact same for hitting the five with or without. Picking up the nine along the way, so.
Do me a favor, Jason, and put the option up there, leave the checker on the twenty-four, play thirteen to seven for the direct cover on the five.
Alright, let me see, so that's. One. Two, three, four, like that, is that what you're talking about?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, get that up there. So that's uh.
We we're sitting here hoping and praying and assuming he 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 fans, and and if he fans, we have eleven shots to cover the five, and I think that's. Uh now we have all day to hit the checker on the nine or at least another chance. I don't know.
Okay, let's vote.
I'm happy to be wrong. I usually am anyway.
Problem is, is when he doesn't fan, if if he rolls a five, we are much worse off, I think, by moving to the seven.
Hey, we got eleven votes in here. Bill got a lot of votes, but he didn't quite make it, Bill.
That's alright, I I'm I'm okay, and I'm okay to be really wrong, I think over the board. Uh without twenty minutes to think about it, this is probably what I would have done, so I have to stick.
I get the logic behind your play, it it does make sense, I understand for your.
I I feel like I know, and I could be wrong, that XG very much will value the direct cover on the five. Uh, cause we have to hope he fans, I mean, if he fans, we're screwed anyway.
Okay, this is the play that won the vote, just barely over the Bill Spruce hot plate special. How do we do? Boy, we got another one. Uh oh, here's Bill's play.
How bad was it?
Oh.
Triple, a double and a half?
Yeah, sorry, buddy.
Alright.
Well, a blunder is is point eight or point ten?
Uh whatever you, there there's no scientific definition of a blunder.
Okay.
Alright, we better hit. Or cover or something.
Both.
Hits.
Hit. That's an easy one.
Doing the bar best by far.
Is there anything else? Do we wanna? Any consideration for lifting?
No.
No, not really, no.
Not at all.
Alright, sounds like the peanut gallery says just hit.
Anything else is a quad ruple whopper. Nope, only triple.
Okay. Alright, we're doing pretty good here. If this was a different score, I might consider. Redoubling sooner, but their take point is so low, I don't, I don't think we're there.
Can't cover, can't safety.
Yeah, so gotta go to seven. That's Bill's dream uh position.
It's Bill's dream position, yeah. Uh is there any other play we can consider? I I can't even imagine, we can't. We can't anything else, we don't even get a direct cover.
Eighteen to twelve. And nine to. Four, that way we get the double sixes. If if we do the other, then double sixes still leaves a block.
We don't, we don't care about the block at this point, I. Think.
And the not, the checker on the nine in the meantime is safe and serving a value. To us, safetying it is counterproductive.
I like the eighteen to seven. It gives you twos and fours to cover.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, sounds like uh that's the ground swell, alright, the votes are coming in for eighteen to sevens.
Twos, fours and ones. Okay.
Boy, they they just won't go away.
Yeah, double twos.
I I actually, Jason, I think that's what they're thinking about us.
Yeah, oh, right, yeah. Alright, I think this is clear, right? We just have to.
Yeah, it's clear. Yeah, it's very much.
Did we know whether our move was correct?
Which one, but?
This one is the go, uh the eighteen-seven, yeah. Yeah, okay, so. Okay. He keeps hitting us.
I know, he keeps hitting us.
We're recycling the wrong checkers.
Yeah. We've got two dead checkers, that's that's a little bit problematic for us.
Uh seven-five, bar twenty-four.
Seven-five.
Yeah. Boy, that's that stinks, it's gonna take us a while to get the reinforcements around, right?
Yeah, but we have no choice, really.
I don't, I don't think we have a lot of choice here.
Seventeen and nineteen are not common rules to get.
No, they're not, okay, let's do it. Oh my gosh.
My god.
This is like if if at first you don't succeed, try and try again.
Yeah, we're gonna be playing some weird version of hypergammon here. Alright, now what?
Let it out.
Yeah, there's a couple of ways of doing it.
That's true. Um, yeah, twenty-three and nineteen.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be a big, it's not gonna be a big difference.
When they roll double fives?
They're gonna stop on the twenty point, uh maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, the fortunately, it the parity is off, it's not like you can, so it'll either be fifteen and ten. Or twenty and five, those are the only options.
Wow, look at you with your fancy math words.
Checker on the twenty-three covers. With. Sixes.
Aha, so if you're sitting on the twenty-three point and you roll double sixes. It goes all the way to the five point.
Right.
Yes.
And if you roll double, if we go to the twenty and they roll double fives, they're not gonna come around and hit us, so it doesn't, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, let's vote, we only have time for a few more plays and then we'll stop. This game has been pretty crazy. This is, this has barely been, it's barely felt like backgammon, it's so weird.
I think uh you just go to the twenty, and then they roll double five, we're still in a good shape. Get to hit them back.
Yeah, that's true too. Okay, if you haven't voted, go ahead and cast your vote. Okay, lots of votes for going to the nineteen point. Let's do that.
Oh, I think I misvoted, no, I didn't, okay.
Uh, close. Oh, here's a play we didn't look at. And that, so that's a yet another way of spreading them out. I think Karen's point of being on the twenty-three point. I think Karen's point of being on the twenty-three point is, is a pretty good one, the double sixes go directly to the five.
It's up to you to roll it.
Uh, yeah, right. Double fours will work too.
But we need to be on the twenty.
Okay, so, uh, is this, this is not a good roll, am I right?
Correct.
Definitely not.
Nineteen sixteen gives nice spread out, if you get past it, then range for the back checkers.
What about staying where we are and moving four to one, two to one? Four to two, two to one, whatever. Since those are dead checkers anyway.
I think we wanna establish some presence to be able to hit some checkers in the outfield, we need to get a little bit closer.
We, we might need to not move our back checkers soon, and if we sacrifice like the four and the two now, we won't be able to. To move, to not move our check, we might not be able to not move our checkers when we want to soon, so.
Yeah, you might wanna save those.
Yeah.
It's not clear right now, if it's not clear, then I wanna save them for a rainy day. Yeah.
Yes.
You're right.
He was thinking of sort of somewhere between, even before he said that, of like a nineteen seventeen to one, but I think, I'm, I'd rather just nineteen sixteen.
Okay, I, about like twenty-three to twenty?
I mean, he can move from the five and leave us only some real long shots, and next time he may be safeties up.
So you wanna come here because you're, you wanna force the issue?
Yeah. Keep two back and force the issue with one.
Cause if we could just hit one checker, we might be able to keep them off balance. You know, one of their, one of our main assets is the fact that anytime we get hit, we, we don't have a lot of trouble coming in.
I think the most common variation is that they wind up with two blots. In. The bottom. Uh, right quadrant, um. And I think twenty-three to twenty. And nineteen, oh, um. Twenty-two to twenty-one. And nineteen to eighteen, I don't know, we just wanna get builders close enough. To have maximum shots at, at blots in that quadrant. And I don't think that nineteen sixteen is it. You, you need both of those checkers helping. To capture those blots coming around. And I made the weird point, uh, case for the double sixes on the twenty-three, but the twenty double fives. If he's left a blot on the five. Then the, our double fives would hit him there for the twenty. I just like, I think I like, well, the other point I was going, if the nineteen. Goes to the eighteen, six, fives hit it. If it stays on the nineteen, double sixes hit it.
Also, double threes and double fours.
Right. So I think I go to the eighteen, but I don't know. And then twenty-three, twenty.
But if he hits us on the nineteen, we have an immediate, um, direct return.
It's just that they are so far from the outfield. Um.
Right, that, that was actually the main reason I wasn't thinking move the twenty-three up, because they're not gonna come within good range. You, you may well be right, but that's why I didn't think along those lines.
I, I have another argument against this play now, is what, if they hit us. We won't have a direct shot, and they'll hit us with six, three, five, four, uh, double threes and six, five.
Let's just stay on the seventeen and instead of the sixteen.
So maybe, okay, so this is another one.
Yeah, probably better, you know.
What about twenty-four, twenty-one?
Sixes and six, five, yeah.
But it loses the sixes. The double sixes.
He has the double sixes now, and he has double fives, that's a double hit.
What about twenty-four, twenty-one? It's not on your list.
Alright, we're running up against time, so we better, uh. We better vote and get out of here. And start the tournament. So, if you have not yet voted, this is the time to do so. Wow, there are six different plays that have received votes.
That's too much.
That means collectively, we have no idea.
What the fuck's going on, yeah.
No clue.
Throw it out there.
Oh, it sucks, gee, just pick.
Just close your eyes and pick one.
Yeah, close your eyes, oh, we got ten votes in, twelve votes in.
Mighty mo.
Okay, here it is, we're gonna play twenty-three, twenty-one, nineteen, eighteen. That's the one that has gotten the most votes, okay, this is our last one, we'll stop for today. Finally made a mistake.
One more, one more.
Twenty-three, twenty-two, nineteen, seventeen, well, these are pretty tough. Nineteen sixteen was right at the top too. Those two plays are.
Is two more points off, close enough for smug equity?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're gonna call it a day for our study session, if you're watching us on YouTube, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com. To find out how you can join our study session and our weekly tournaments, okay, thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Very interesting.